Ian, let's start.
Sure.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberate and just.
Alright, we are officially convened. Start with our roll call. Missy Cottle?
Here.
Ania Lowry?
Here.
Jeff Upton?
Here.
Jan Frogmore?
Yes, here.
Chiana Collin?
Here.
Kira Hungate?
Here.
Don Rollins?
Is absent.
Joe Towor?
Here.
City Attorney and City Clerk are both in residence. So we'll start with the adoption of our agenda as it was mailed.
I'll make that motion. A second.
Those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, same sign. Next, we need a motion to approve our minutes from the June 13th meeting.
I'll make that motion. A second.
All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
And those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And next is our public forum. We will allow guest speakers two minutes to address the City Council with any questions or comments that you may have. Is there anyone here that wants to address the council? Tell us your name.
I'm Michelle Winkler. I work with the Heritage Cooperative Gardens. Your garden. I just wanted to give you a little update on it. I'm passing some pictures around. It kind of starts from the beginning and shows you where we are now. And also, there's a flyer in there that we handed out at the Fourth of July works, which was really wonderful. We, that and about sixty-five tomatoes, hoping to gather people to come. So the flyer is still correct, if you'd like to take a look at it. And except for the dates, we're still doing, we're working in the garden from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM on Wednesdays and from 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM on Saturdays. And there are people working there at other times, but those are the times where we have people there to help people who want to volunteer, other people who want to volunteer. So in those pictures, you can see where we started from and you can see some of the things that are happening now. And we prepped all the soil and then we planted a lot of things. We've planted corn, which is coming up. We've planted tomatoes, which are getting really ripe. Also, some failures. The tomato has got a little bit of something on them. But we're trying to be organic. So you're going to end up with a lot of, some things, not a lot, some things that don't go all the way. But the tomatoes are still there and they're good, so we're getting those. And then there's a whole three-quarters of a roll that didn't get the infestation of it. We also have okra and purple hull beans and green beans and some peppers that haven't come up, onions yet. We pulled those up. Some of them were too small, so we ground them under. And the others, we're just letting dry on the ground for now and then we're going to hang them up. So that's good. And then the next thing is, you can see in there, there's a field that looks like white flowers and you think, well, what is that? And it is buckwheat. Not that we're going to grind our own flour, but we're preparing the soil. Because again, we're trying to be as organic as possible and that will kill, kill out the Johnson grass and all the other stuff. So we're making good progress and we like it, but we need volunteers. One of those pictures, I think, might have two or three yellow signs standing up. What it is, is that we'd like somebody to be a sign painter for us. So if you know of anybody who might paint a sign for us, so we can put it out and show them what we're doing. And we've given, we've given out those sixty-five tomatoes. We gave out eighty, eighty-five tomatoes and some green beans to the Meals on Wheels, which serves in South Washington County. And we'd like to start selling some of the produce now at the farmer's market. And on Wednesdays, I don't see them on Wednesdays there anymore. Are they, are they there? I don't know. But we'd like to set up there on Wednesday and sell some to you. So remember, if you volunteer, you get some of the produce and I can attest that it's good. Any questions?
What, what things were you volunteering?
It's on Wednesdays from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM and Saturday, 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM. If anyone wants to go earlier on Saturday, I'd be glad to because it is hot. And if any of you would like a one, pass them around.
We'll have Chad put those hours on the marquee, Michelle, and maybe that'll help.
Oh, great. Thank you. That'd be great.
Michelle?
Yeah.
I've also stuck this on our website.
I did see that. Thank you.
If there's other information that you want to put, just updates every now and then or something like that, just send us.
Okay. Thank you. She's been very helpful in putting stuff up when I asked her something. Anyone else want to see this? Alright, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to address the council?
Don't try that on me. Tried to hand them all to you.
Alright, so we'll close our public forum and move into our business reports. So as we do this this week, we're first of July, so we have your budget in. So I'd like to take this opportunity to kind of look at some budgets as we go through this. Christie has been underlining line items that are over budget by percentage of year. So right now, our budgets should be roughly fifty percent of budget, okay? Our year-to-date expenditures or revenues should be roughly fifty percent. Now, there are several line items that are going to be a timing issue where we've paid dues or we've paid insurance, this or that. But I thought, well, I've highlighted everything that was sixty percent or over budget. And so, as the department heads come forward, we'll just ask you about that. You guys can let us know what's going on and we'll discuss it. But before we get there, does anyone have any questions about how to read these? Everyone understands that court document? Because I don't. Which court? A bunch of liars.
The first four or five years, I didn't know how to read any of it. I've been here longer than I believe.
So if you do have any questions, though, on, on the reports, please bring that up while we go through it, okay? Scott's not here. Our planning commission is going to start giving us a monthly report as well. Scott's not here tonight for some reason. He was planning on being, so we'll jump into the library report with John.
I'd be happy to talk about the, how I'm doing on my budget after I give a brief report. If you have any questions, I'm certainly aware of where we're running a little high right now and there are several reasons for that, but anyway, especially with the book budget, we're definitely going to be limited from here to the end of the year on what we can spend. But as far as business, other business, the children's programs are going well. We're averaging about, well, between twenty and thirty kids for each program. So it's a really good turnout, I think, for a town of our size to have that kind of participation. And mainly, you know, kindergarten through the fourth grade is the main target audience there. And so we're getting them all, keeping the reading logs and reporting and we're getting, giving them, displaying what they've done over the summers. And we'll continue that for two more weeks until we'll have our sort of party at the end of the program on July 24th. We've had some local businesses step up with some prizes. It's been really great and we've also bought some things for, you know, to give away to the kids who've done really well, as well as maybe giving away some by drawing. So that's going great and it's great to always have kids in the library. We attended two board meetings last, on the same day, as it turned out, June 22nd, I think, the school board meeting. We just wanted to let them know, gave a brief talk about how we were interested in working more closely with the schools during the school year and that we're excited about our expansion and we hope that we can use it partly to, to, you know, serve the schools in different ways, after-school programs, volunteer programs, that kind of thing, so. And then we also attended the county, we're part of the Washington County Library System. We attended the, Susan McCown and I attended the County Library Board Meeting. And one thing that came out of that is that our children's librarian is retiring, Sherry Rogers, who's been doing the programs here for, I don't know, almost forty years, I think. And there's a possibility that that job will not be replaced. And so, that's something that actually the county board is going to meet, have a special meeting to decide upon. So there's a real possibility we won't have story hour this fall, which would be, seemed like would be a real shame because that's been such a tradition here. The reason-
That's something that actually the county board is going to meet, have a special meeting to decide upon. So there's a real possibility we won't have story hour this fall, which would be, seemed like would be a real shame because that's been such a tradition here. The reason-
They're not replacing it for, there's a couple of reasons, I guess, but the main thing, I think, is that they just don't think that they can find somebody who can do everything that Sherry does. I mean, traveling around to like five or six different libraries, presenting programs, doing it all basically on, planning, doing all the planning on our own. So the alternative would be to just take the money from our salary and distribute it to the libraries and let them, you know, decide what they, how they want to do, what they want to do in terms of serving the children with that money. So we'll see what they decide and then we'll move from there. But, you know, we're certainly going to, we're going to have to get creative, I guess, in how we can continue to, you know, do things like story hour. I think that we need to find a way to keep doing that, you know, even if it's through volunteers or, or, you know, hiring a part-time person with the money that would be available to us. But we certainly need a children's librarian, I think, or somebody who's responsible for those programs in place, even if it's part-time, so. So I think that's the main thing then. Any, any questions on that or money or?
So tell us a little bit about your book budget.
Yeah. Yeah, it's running high. It's, you know, we spent eighty percent of our funds, you know, so far, which is, you know, only halfway through the year. We're not halfway, so that's, or this is halfway, so, you know, I just have to show restraint, basically, from here on. I've got about nine hundred and sixty a month, I think, to spend from here on. You know, there's several factors at work. The friends in the past have helped with purchasing books and they've decided to withhold funds for now because they want to use the money that they're accumulating in that book fund to, when we get the new library, you know, expansion, they want to have, be able to identify needs and have that money available, you know, to, to help with the, you know, once we roll out our new library, quote unquote, after the expansion. So that's, you know, that's their decision, it's their money and so, that's played into a little bit, because usually they've helped us, you know, and sort of turned the purchasing power. So, you know, some of it is, is a, you know, just a byproduct of, you know, we do a lot of upfront spending through standing orders that we have in place and so, but that's not, that's not an excuse, but anyway, that's part of it. It's sort of front-loaded in some ways, the book budget, but, but anyway, we're certainly aware of it, we shouldn't, I'm not expecting to go over, so. So if I don't, then hold my feet to the fire if I do.
This is the part I enjoy, so I will. And then also the building maintenance, and I assume that's probably partially due to the people counter? Is that?
Well, yeah, that's, I guess we put some man-hours into that with Isaac installing it. Is that, I'm not really even sure what all goes into building maintenance. It's sort of, I'm not sure I can control those, that line, too much.
I'm going back and looking exactly. I know they've had, Eric Anderson was on, I think maybe twice this year, they've had to call Anderson's out to work on a unit, their termite policy.
We did, yeah, we had somebody spray, we've had, you know, sprayed outdoor. We just, you know, we asked for indoor treatment as well for some of the pests, you know. And so we have a contract with Terminix now, so. I think that was the only thing I could think of and other than, I don't know how we're charged for when city workers come over, if we're charged for that, if they come over?
No, we're not charged there. Alright. Hopefully, hopefully we can get construction started there before maintenance issues get any worse.
Right, right, yeah. It's just, I think the nature of that building now is that it has become expensive to maintain and, you know, just-
Right.
That's why we're doing the construction right now.
Any other questions for John? Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Paulette?
I'm going to explain my report to you. Yes. Is it really that complicated?
Probably not, it's just complicated for me.
Okay. Well, the first item on there is a new citation entries. That's the number of tickets written by each department for the court this month, new citation entries.
Okay. So can I ask you a question before we even move? Because this is, this part's baffled me for a week.
Okay.
Is there a reconciliation between this and the police report? So the police are showing they had ninety-five citations.
Well, they count theirs a little different than I do. I take mine just from the computer. And I, I just, there's a program in there that I can run that shows how many citations we've entered for that officer this month. So they might be writing them and getting them counted the month before and it could be that I'm not getting them on the computer till a little bit later. So I think that's where the problem is. The second column there is what we did the previous month, of course, in May. So we're down a little bit on numbers for June. And then the next column is June of last year at this time, that's what we did last year. So our numbers are up significantly from what they were last year. And our year-to-date is the next number. And then last year's year-to-date, so we're up there. And then the next little section down there is the trials that we have scheduled. And trials are held the first Tuesday or Thursday, we're on Thursdays now. The first Thursday is city trials and then the second and fourth Thursdays are county trials. And the girls in the front office love it when we have trials.
I bet.
They want to just have a shutter on their window to close.
Lock the doors.
Yeah, lock the doors. The total there is what the total is for the month for trials. Now, those are held separately from arraignments. These are people that have come in on arraignment and down there where it says not guilty, they assured us that they were not guilty, so we scheduled them for trials. And then they come in and talk to the prosecutors. Basically, most of those are all plea bargained out, but once in a while, we do have an actual, people take the witness stand and we'll have an actual trial. Civil cases are held every other month. Those are ever so much fun also. It's like the Judge Judy's Court where people come in and their dog bit my dog and now I had the vet bill of eighty dollars and I want you to pay it, that sort of thing. Trying to see if there's anything else on there. Are there any, have any questions for me on any?
Tell us about the dispersments.
The dispersments down there, that's the money that I dispersed for the month. It may not be how mu, I may, may have collected more, but that's what my computer tells me I'm to disperse for the month. Everybody under the sun. That will be, and down below, it shows you how that was dispersed. Cost is given to the state and that allotment is what we are allowed to keep from our cost amount each month. The state says I can keep eight thousand, three hundred and sixty-six dollars and sixty-three cents.
For the court?
Well, part of it's with court. I have to give the county two thousand, four hundred and twenty-six dollars and thirty cents of that. Then that fifty-nine forty is what I get to keep.
Got it.
I get to keep any money.
Everybody's got their handle on the money.
Yeah. Fifty-nine forty is what is paid to the court. And then the state, whatever the overage is, is what the next number is.
Okay.
Okay? And then on fines, the county share of that varies each month, as does the city share. That's just money that's collected on fines. And the city share comes into if, when the state police are up here working on the highway, if they write their ticket within the fifty-three and fifty-four mile per hour, mile markers up there, that money stays with the city. And highway police also, if they write theirs in that, it's considered city limits, so that money stays with the city. So when they're writing those tickets up there for a hundred and twelve and a hundred and sixteen dollars, it's kind of nice, or a hundred and sixteen miles per hour, it's kind of nice when that money stays here. And reckless driving, DWIs and all that fun stuff. If they're outside of that perimeter, the state police money goes to the county. So that's where that fifty-four comes in. And then fees are things like no proof of insurance, there are certain things that the state says these are to be dispersed this way. So if you have a failed to register vehicle ticket with our guys, that money is to be put into a special account to be used for vehicle maintenance of the police cars. And same with the state. It goes to county and they put it in their special little pocket. So there's a few things like that. And one of those things on that where the city gets to keep that sixteen twenty-two is on no proof of insurance. And then somebody comes in later and says, well, I did have insurance at the time I got that ticket, but I didn't have my card with me. The state now charges everybody seventy dollars for not having their card with them when it's asked for. So make sure you guys all have it in your car. I have a very good friend that didn't have hers in her car one night.
I didn't know that.
Yes, keep it in your car. Some officers will take it if you have it on your cellphone, some won't. So stick it in your car. It costs you seventy dollars.
I think that's fair. Everybody's got their cell phone.
State law. And if they come in later and show me that they got insurance the next day, it's a hundred and ninety-five dollars. If they come to court and they just never bother to get insurance at all, it's four hundred and twenty dollars. And if they get a second ticket for that charge, it goes up a hundred dollars. So it goes up each time.
Wonder if you can keep up with all that? She's been doing it a while.
A little bit, a couple days.
Everybody's got their handle.
Yeah. But these things are dispersed in a lot of different places. I mean, I can give you, if you want to sometime, I'll show you my breakdown that I do. I do a spreadsheet and Christie goes, why do you do that? Because the computer does it. That's how I started to do it. And I know the computer does it, but I don't know what the computer's telling me sometimes. So I break it down to Paulette speak. And then I can tell exactly, if the auditor says, what was this for? I can go say, well, it was for this right here. On the computer printout, it's not quite as detailed as I like it, so I go into a few more details. Okay? Does that help?
It does.
Okay.
I'm listening, thank you.
You're welcome.
And then you had one fine item that was seventy percent, but it was dues and I'm sure that's a timing issue.
It's always paid in the spring, yeah, always paid in the spring. And some of our, like Christie pointed out to me, the Department of Finance is about sixty-six percent this time.
On the Administration of Justice.
On the Administration of Justice, sorry. Part of that is due to the fact that the judge came up with a brilliant plan, that I have a lot of people that are on time pays, because I don't know about anybody else, but if I was to get a ticket today, have to come in and pay a hundred and ninety-five dollars for something, I'd have to make it payments. So I have people that do that. And sometimes they forget to pay me. Can't imagine why. Somebody can send you to jail and they forget to pay me. So we've started something new because there's been, you know, a lot of courts in the news lately that people were getting fined excessively for failure to pay and they're getting excessive warrants and that sort of thing. So what we're doing, before we issue a warrant for someone for fail to pay, we schedule them for a review. So what I do is I pull their file out, I'll send them a letter and say, look, you're, you have X number of dollars that you're paying on here. You know, your account's a hundred and ninety-five dollars. You haven't paid me in three months, so now that's seventy-five dollars that you owe me. And the state charges them ten dollars a month for having this account, so that's an additional thirty dollars. Now they're up to a hundred and five. So I send them a letter and say, you either pay me the one ninety-five or you pay a hundred and five and bring your account up to date. Or you come in and talk to the judge and tell him why you haven't been able to do this. Some people have had family emergencies, you know, we understand that and we can give them, you know, some leniency for a while. But if they've gone past three months and they haven't made a payment, then we send these letters. So they either come in and take care of it, get them caught up, or you come and talk to the judge. And you'd be amazed how many people don't want to talk to the judge. So they'll come in and they'll pay me buckets of money. So it's like, okay, it works real, real good. So that's, I think that's where a lot of our revenue is coming from. A lot of those folks are saying, you know what, I'm just tired of having this hanging around my head here, just let me pay it off. So I think when it push comes to shove, they will find the money somehow. I hope they're not taking it off the dinner table, but it is what it is sometimes.
Any other questions for Paulette?
You guys didn't know I could talk so much, did you?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tell me, tell me if you didn't learn something.
Not much, because I used to do court work.
Yeah. I didn't know about the mile marker thing.
Yeah, I didn't know that.
You didn't know about mile markings? We all learned a little bit of it.
Alright, John.
We had two hundred and eighty-nine service calls, thirty-eight reports taken with ninety-seven citations, twenty-one arrests, which is up for us, twenty-seven warrants, which is a little bit higher. I think you had, you had pointed out the ordinance violations at twenty-seven, the property complaints at five. I think that would come into play now that I think about it with the parking violations that we're riding at the park.
Today, eighty-two since Memorial Day.
Eighty-two since Memorial Day. And you know, the weird thing is, they will leave, we'll ride on a parking ticket, they get mad and leave, and another group's there twenty-five minutes filling out the same spots.
They're parking everywhere.
So it's, yeah, yeah.
We need some more parking.
No.
When he left, he was driving.
No. Show him a parking.
So John, go ahead.
Training, we went ahead and completed our ethics and racial profiling training. We did our semi-firearms training and we actually listed with the state of Arkansas. I guess we hadn't done that in a while. I'm going to, Officer Langston, who is here today because we let him come back one more time. He just hugged you guys and said bye, so I want to kind of put him on the hot seat. Are you staying? He took his FBI criminal investigation course at an entry level. And then later on this month, we're going to take the A-Ride course, which has an, it's an advanced roadside impaired driving enforcement. It is in between field sobriety and DRA, drug recognition expert. What I consider probably one of the hardest classes in police work. My goal is to get every officer certified in that. That helps with recognizing prescription pills and stuff like that, which I think we're missing out on a little bit. We're all standard field sobriety, we're not that next level. And I think that will take us to the next level and help us get some of those other DWIs. Of course, we all work at the fireworks, you know, as always. We've doubled up, I'm using two guys, generally on Sunday because that's our worst day at the park. Saturdays are bad, Sundays seem to really bring out everybody. A big thing that has happened, Officer Gillen has come to me after much discussion, she has asked to leave the school. She wants to try, and she wasn't forced, I want everybody to know that, she was not forced out of the school. She wants to leave, she wants to go back on patrol and see what she can do from there. She has some ideas on what she wants to do and what she wants, goals she wants to meet. The only officer that was interested besides her at the time was Officer Langston. So I have talked to the superintendent, we would like to change the contract, we're working on that, we'd have to get approval from you guys. We're trying to change that from seventy-five twenty-five to more of a fifty-fifty, meaning our school resource officer, we all know there's days over there where they do nothing, they're bored. They can run on some calls, they can help us out there. You're not going to be bored if you're in there, you're going to be doing a lot of classes. But it just allows us more freedom to be able to use that officer. Know there's days over there where they do nothing, they're bored, they can run on some calls, they can help us out there. You're not going to be bored if you're in there, you're going to be doing a lot of classes. But it just allows us more freedom to be able to use that officer for backup and things like that if, if something important comes up. Do you have any questions on that stuff? And what about budget?
Budget, you've got two line items that, drug enforcement, you're at a hundred percent of your budget.
That is the drug task force.
No income.
That's a one-time payment.
And the other one is insurance, which is probably the timing.
Yeah, they, they credit us in July, is that the insurance or is that something else?
Well, one of-
Well, that's fifty-six percent.
Our vehicle insurance pays at first of the year, property insurance pays at the last of the year, so it's just, it's timing.
Other than that, your budget's in really good shape.
No, we're not over budget, but I just want to give you a heads up on the vehicle maintenance. We have two officers that love Jeff Upton's road, but they don't seem to be able to drive it very well, so.
Glad they like it though.
Yeah. And that has totaled to about twenty-one hundred dollars. Yeah. So that's gonna be real close, we're gonna have to move some money from somewhere to cover that. And they can still go down your road, but they know where they can't go.
Not sure where they went. Fairly paid, but it's not too bad.
So insurance don't cover any of that?
Insurance, the first one was a four hundred dollar bill, we're not gonna mess with insurance. The next one was quoted to us around sixteen hundred, so we decided, I don't want premiums to go up, we got a pretty good budget, let's just take care of it.
Thousand dollars.
It's a thousand dollar good debt. We got the price for it today and it was nineteen hundred. And yeah, so it went up a little bit. But I still think we have a good enough budget to cover it and keep those premiums. Any other questions?
You think I should go? Thanks, John. Isaac?
It's been a while since I seen you guys. We do have a couple things going on. We did have our pre-con meeting for our McKnight Street grant sidewalk down there and I don't know if any of y'all's been that way, but they have started on it and are making pretty good headway. I think they allotted them a hundred days and they're figuring on being done in a month. So, and that's, that's even if we include an extra hundred feet that we're looking at trying to add on down there and getting across Wicket and Street. Plumbers are, they're like two services in Westmore acres being completely tied over and they'll be done over there with the digging part. And they're talking like overlay will be starting in the next week or so.
Wow.
And starting to overlay the street. Davis is working at Arvest Bank and that's the last little section of main that they'll have to replace. And they're winding down on their rehab contract, so. And the one little service here at the Arvest that they missed, Charlie Service that goes across there, they got, the plumbers will come and tie it in and then that'll be done. And other than that, I just don't have a whole lot, we're trying to keep up with grass and-
Bridges?
Uh, we are, the last I heard, it was supposed to start July fifth, they were supposed to start July fifth on the Di Creek, the main Di Creek Bridge, or White River Bridge on Di Creek Road. That has been pushed back, I hadn't seen them, I don't know if that's a FEMA thing. I don't know if FEMA's holding them up with the, the extra money they asked for, but now they're looking at July twenty-eighth.
Next year?
I'm open here in a couple, three weeks, so. They are-
It is what it is.
I talked to the contractor, he called me on the phone and, and he said they are gonna go ahead and mobilize and they have been granted permission to come in and tear out the old bridges. So there just may not be a bridge there for a while until they get the money to put it back.
One direction or the other.
Yeah, yeah. So, and Nick is, less sorry, I put a lot of stuff on Nick's plate, but he is working on our portion of the, of what is the Di Creek Bridge. And in my conversation with the contractor, we will just change order that into the county's project and pay the county our portion and they'll just change order right into the project that they have. So, Truce will be last.
First, last, I won't. I think it's done.
And on, on the Woolsey Bridge end, those guys have demobilized and went back to Missouri to do an emergency bridge, they'll be back in about six weeks.
So they have to steel truss across the supports?
Yeah, and they are, they're a hundred and eighty days ahead of schedule, if you can believe that, I mean, I think they-
They have schedules like that.
I think they wrote in several weather days for them due to the, the fact that they were in the river and couldn't, couldn't be in the river most of the time, so, so they are ahead of schedule. And I, and Christie might know, but I think we did get the, the grant written for the Woolsey Bridge, the Woolsey Bridge, trying to get a little money from, I think that's the Walton Foundation, trying to get-
A lot of money.
Yeah, we need a lot of money, so.
Yeah.
But we, we did have someone reach out to the city just past week, a friend of yours and, or at least she's still highly engaged. But a little landscape architecture company and pay a bill where she works and anyway, they reached out to us, wanted to know if they could help us write a grant, they're interested in us getting the bridge, so.
This is a preliminary, just kind of putting our name in the hat with a very brief overview of what we want. And then I think in September they'll let us know if we qualify for the next stage and then there's gonna be a lot more involved in that part of it.
You have to, you have to make it to the second, second stage of it and then you, you write a more detailed thing and then you, I, I think that's how it works, you've gotta keep finishing in the top three like-
Like American Idol.
Yeah, like American Idol, till you've got it out, so.
So it's a long shot, but it was, it was a great opportunity, it was great to have someone, they contacted us wanting to know if they could help us, so.
That's about all I have, unless y'all want to talk about this here, budget.
So on yours, Isaac, equipment's at eighty-four percent on the street fund?
Yeah, we, half of that, twelve-five of that is one half of the sidearm, rush arm. I think that was budgeted for a new lawnmower and-
To buy a sidearm.
To buy a sidearm. For the tractor and a new lawnmower is what we had budgeted. So twelve-five of that went towards the sidearm.
Okay. And then the outside services?
That is our portion of the Ozark Transit.
That's what that is.
Mm-hmm.
And so Christie, remind me, because that's something else I want to address in your report, does, I know all of you guys get those emails from Ozark Transit, are you guys looking at those? At the very bottom is where the information is that's pertinent to Westwood, so we'll talk about that when Christie gets her report. Any other questions for Isaac? Anything on the wastewater side? Chemicals are up on wastewater.
Chlorine is up, chlorine bottles are a little more expensive, so.
Okay. Any other questions? Isaac didn't mention it, but our, what is it, what do you call it? Our loss, water loss is down for another month.
Yeah, and even the, the new one we got, we're still at nineteen percent.
So you guys have done great work on that.
Yeah.
So bear in mind, what, six months ago, that was, we were running thirty percent some months, so.
Yeah. And even, even last night, we had our water meeting last night and we're, we're looking at just moving ahead and spending some more money out of our capital outlay and, and trying to get another batch of electronic meters in here to help. We captured some water loss with just the twenty we put in the ground, a couple of them had leaks that they weren't showing up on the meters that they had, so. So we're looking at trying to get, I think with forty, about forty more. And then we'll try to, in next year's budget, we'll try to budget in some more.
And the one piece of good news is I and I, with some of the work at Westwood.
Yes, they have eliminated eleven total manholes over there and, and a majority of the pipe, it's just down to about Westwood is all they got laying. We got an inch and a half of rain and the pond took water for a couple hours and then we started taking it right back out of pond. Manhole didn't overflow, so Nick and I are very optimistic that we are capturing some of our inflow, so. Nick was really slick.
Thirty years worth of work.
Right, you're exactly right. Thirty years worth of work in one year.
Yeah. Centerwood was our worst, getting Centerwood taken care of was our worst because there was a couple hundred feet of pipe there that they couldn't even TV, it was so, it was so far gone that they couldn't even get a camera through it, so we were, we were catching gallons of just rainwater in there, so. So we are, it, it looks like we are making improvements, so. Anything else?
You got a few more?
Thanks, Isaac.
Thank you.
Chad?
It's good to see you, Chad. Yeah, it's good to be here.
Isaac said it's been a while since I've been here.
Yeah, it's been a while. But baseball and softball's over, hence I'm here. And overall, it was a great year, it really went well, other than the rain, which is always a problem, but other than that, I think it went real well. Really no major issues, very few, we had great umpires, we really had good coaches this year, it, it just went really well overall, so, very successful. Also, the Fourth of July event, as y'all all know, happened and it was also very successful. It was definitely, I think, we have no way of tracking the people, but I think in my estimation, it was the most people that we've had since I've been involved, for sure. And it was the first time in the four years I've been doing it that we ran out of food and water and everything else, I think. There was a lot of people came to eat. In the past, I think we've had good crowds and we've even had good crowds that come to eat and for the music and the fun, but a lot of them come in later just for the fireworks. But this year, I think a lot more people, people obviously came early, because we've never ran out. And the water, we ran out pretty early and I actually had more water than I've had in the past this year also, so. But I do want to, you know, thank all the volunteers, there were several, including the mayor and several city council members. Fire department, the police department did a great job. We had, just family members and, and First Baptist Church did a great job of, you know, taking care of the water inflatables and, I mean, there was a lot of hands on deck and, and it took every one of them. It was, but overall, I do think it was successful.
Chad, can you answer the question of the year that is on-
It was.
You know exactly what I'm gonna say.
It was intentional, it was part of the show. We've had several comments about that and questions.
Oh my gosh, it's unreal.
They did give us a little warning and, and I did warn some people, I did tell some fire department and police department members, but I failed to tell the fire chief and the police chief specifically, but yes, it was, and I thought it was great, I enjoyed it. It was, it was, I knew it was coming, so I didn't, didn't-
Too big a curveball.
It was a little hot, that could be seen from the engine.
It was, it was quite the ending. I'm not sure what they're gonna do to top it next year, but-
I recorded almost all of it.
You did, you, you got the best of your first number of minutes on.
It looked like something went horribly wrong.
No, not really.
But it, it did, it was part of the show.
Yeah, and it kept going, so nobody was running.
But the thing is the fireworks got faster after that, so you're-
Yeah, right after that and then the, I mean, because they had some great fireworks even that followed it that kind of like, you know, hey, something's still okay, so. It, it was good, it was good. And again, the volunteers, I, there's, I just couldn't do it without them, I mean, there's a lot of, lot happening from six to ten o'clock or even before, but we started cooking as before four o'clock, trying to get ahead and we still couldn't keep up. It was, it was crazy, yeah. But it went well, we've already had discussions that night about things that we're gonna look at doing differently next year to improve it. And we'll have several more between now and then about ways to, to improve it and what we can do better and add to or take away or different things too, so, throughout the year, so.
Yeah, it was good.
And then we're just, we're, so we're gearing up for, for Pee Wee Football and Cheerleading, we've got several off-season projects and summer projects we're working on and, and that, so that's what, what we're doing right now. And along with, as Isaac said, trying to just keep the grass mowed, it, it takes, it takes a lot, so. And John touched on Riverside a little bit, it's still kind of a nightmare, I'm not gonna lie, but, but it, but with their increased presence from, from Chief Nelson's department, it has helped. It, we've had less major incidents down there like we did last year. Still a lot of people, still a lot of trash, still a lot of things going on that shouldn't be going on, but it's getting better, I think, and we're doing the best we can, the trash. We're trying, Carl or myself, try to get down there on the weekends and try to get it, we've had some volunteers do the same. I know Isaac's guys that work the weekend try to, try to get it if they can and, and it's still just piles up, but we, we doing our best and I know John, Chief Nelson's doing his best to, to keep things in order down there too, so. But it's definitely an issue. So that's really all I've got, so.
And then on your budget, Chad, you've got several that are-
Yes, sir.
Out of the, you know-
Yes.
Acceptable, percentage, I say acceptable, but most of yours are all timing and rigors and equipment, events, that type of thing. Your expenses are heavily front-loaded, I know that's-
Yes, yes. We, a lot of the, the ones that are real bad are like the field treatment, we pay that all upfront for the whole year. There will be some, there's a few things that might occur during the year that we may still have to spend a little bit on, but the majority of it is spent upfront. The summer-
Pay that all upfront for the whole year. There will be some, there's a few things that might occur during the year that we may still have to spend a little bit on, but the majority of it is spent upfront. The summer-
Program equipment, that's all, and things like that, that's deals with baseball and so, most of those are just items. Did you have any more specific to-
I don't, there's anyone on the counter?
That makes sense.
Okay. Thank y'all.
It's good to have you back.
Yeah.
And so Chad was chief in the way, Chad was gracious enough to thank everyone for the volunteers helping us the Fourth of July, but Chad, there was a lot of work that you took on there and we appreciate it.
Thank you.
I hope, I hope you've gotten compliments throughout the town.
I have.
So it was a great show.
I have, I appreciate that. Carl and I did a lot of the prep work leading up to it, but we had a lot of help, especially that day and a couple of days before and during that, but, but Carl worked real, I will give him props, too, he worked real hard that week and it, it went awfully, so I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you. All right, Chief.
Typically, June, July are us' lowest two months of the year, so we don't have a whole lot going on. We did do a couple of promotions, we promoted three guys, we promoted Clay Hungate and Mike Fanning up to lieutenant, promoted Rob Repke up to a captain. And on that, we had to suspend a couple of guys for some various reasons, but, you know, stuff like that happens. I was originally gonna ask y'all to cash in some CD to buy some of our turnout gear, but I have enough in my budget, I'm just gonna go that. If something comes up later in the year, we'll discuss it then, but, that, working on our training tower up here, kind of doing a little extra work, all of our lumber was donated by Dirkson's down the road, Clay got the guy to give us all the lumber for us, it didn't cost us anything. Clay and Dustin and Dwayne, a bunch of them are doing the work themselves, so we got very, very minimal expense in it, but it'll help them when they're doing their training. It was already with the four poles we already had in the back, so, other than that, that's all I've got, guys, no questions.
So on your budget, the only one that's about sixty percent line item is Billy Magnons, which-
All I can say about that is don't tear up the biggest door you have on a Sunday. Garage guys, they don't have a sense of humor when they come out on a Sunday. They, they plan on being paid very well. Figured out us in the wrong business. But yeah, that, that, ninety-nine percent of that's where that came from.
And rest of your budget's in really good shape, so. The, the Greenland Fire contract's at seventy-five percent, but so is the-
That's money, we, right, I mean, you know, they share that with the wall.
So just in case anybody was seeing that. And this is the quote on the turnout gear, is that what that is?
Uh, it should be. Uh, it should be, yes, sir. Yeah, just kinda let everybody know about what we have to spend per person to do this.
One set.
One, one person from head to toe for the turnout gear. There's a lot of, there's other equipment to go along with it, but that's to basically outfit them for that.
Any other questions for chief? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Christie?
I wanna go over the semiannual report that I put on the bottom of what your normal monthly report is first. I'm very excited where our numbers are so far this year. I think we're doing great. Our bank balances have increased since January by 128,000. Our sales tax compared to January to June last year is up $103,000, $103,000 this year. And the overall city budget, only one department is running in the red, the rest of them are all running in the black. And as a city, as a whole, including the water department, which I don't typically bunch in together, but since we were kinda doing a whole budget, I've bunched them in with it, is in the black by $262,000. I think that's by far probably the best semiannual report that I've ever given since I've been in this position, so I think we're doing really good on that. The department heads are all very, very good to watch their budget and try to be conscious of what they're spending and stay where they can, not feel like they have to spend every penny of it just because they've got it, so I think that's.
I was gonna point that out too, just so everyone on the council knows that I'm not monitoring these guys like crazy on their budgets. I told them that I didn't wanna see any budget come in at zero. A budget is an expectation. You should be either under it or over it, but just because you didn't spend it all doesn't mean you won't get the same budget next year. That happens a lot, especially in government budgeting. People try to spend the entire budget so they can get the same amount the following year. And that's by no means a good way. Yes, exactly, so.
So, I, I think the numbers are looking great. On the city general fund budget, and you can tell me if I missed any, Heath, but the one, the first one's the computer consultants. Is that 104? And we talked about that, I think it was last month or month before, that we had bought some new virus protection that was higher than we expected, so that one's gonna be over for the year. The fuel expense is a little high. That a lot of times this season also. Those are for Danny and Ed. Those two trucks are on that, is what's paid out of that fuel expense.
Is any of that associated with our hauling the recyclables now?
Could be. It just depends on who turns the ticket in, who's getting the gas for it. So if Danny's, Danny's doing a lot of that hauling, so it's, that's possible that that's where it's getting billed to.
And so, that was something I wanted to point out while we were here was, and I'm not suggesting anything other than that we look at this, but our recycle revenue for the year, year to date, is $361. Our fuel expense is up and our recycle, the expense account line item is at $2,600 for the year. So we brought in $345. We've spent $2,600 plus
Plus man hours.
entries of fuel and man hours. So that's something we need to start looking at and see how we wanna manage that. We can continue to spend that or, or not, but it's something that needs to be looked at.
Once we get everything else calmed down with the trash, because it's kinda been a little crazy. Yes, once we get all those kinks out, we're gonna get back with them and have a meeting, Isaac and I and whoever needs to be involved in that, and figure out what they can do for us at the recycling center, because they said that they would help with that. And then I know Isaac and I, and I think you've been on the conversation of at some point trying to leave that open center in the week. The, the largest part of their expense is the fact that we're paying volunteers.
Right.
It's kinda a weird way to.
Observe more on that.
Yeah. But that's a lot of the expense, so if we can maybe
Have it unmanned.
Have it unmanned or have less, I mean, if there's, you know, not so many hours where someone has to be down there or something, I think that would help. And I think if Inland is gonna help take it and dispose of it, that'll, that'll help a lot. So those are a couple of things that we're looking at to hopefully control that. The other one that's, one of the other one that ties to the planning commission expense, and that's a yearly fee to the regional planning. That's like, that's almost 100% already. The property tax is at 304% and that is because I did bad budgeting. Forgot about the fact that we would have to pay property tax on the new City Works building, because we're not in it yet. We don't have to pay property tax on buildings that we're in and occupying, but we're not in and occupying that one, so we had to pay property tax on it. The retirement is at 78%. And that is because at the beginning of the year, we take the full amount that we pay Paula Colton for her retirement. We take it from the general fund, put it into a retirement account that she gets paid out of each, each month, so that big portion comes out the first year. I don't expect that to be over at the end of the year. Did you see any more on that? The regional planning, or regional transit, I was like, regional transit. The last report we got just a couple of days ago, I think we had had six riders.
Had seven.
Was it seven for the, for the whole year?
Since they have went to the on-demand, which was, was that at the beginning of the year? Do you guys remember what month that was?
No, that was May or June.
So, May or June when it had the fire?
Yeah.
Okay, so since that time, we've had seven riders from the city of West Fork. The other small towns are experiencing similar fate, okay? So when, when they were making the loop, the last time he was here and addressed the council, we brought this up to him. You know, that, that we would have to address how we wanted to continue to fund that. We originally paid $9,000.
Well, it's like an $8,000 disbursement now.
Eighty-two hundred.
Four to six riders.
Or seven riders.
Yeah.
Right, and so when we originally agreed to that, that was when they were running a constant route through the rural towns. And so now, yes, we have paid $8,000 for roughly seven people to run the fare.
So, I read the report the other night, it didn't seem sustainable.
Well, it isn't for West Fork for sure. There's, there's more ridership in the larger towns and obviously that's something, you know, we wanna try to support, you know, the public transportation, but at that rate, we have to make some adjustments.
I would have to go back and look, because it's been probably three years ago, before we start, before we bought in to the 8200, we were still paying a small fee and, and I wanna say somewhere maybe around $1,500 a year or something like that. And that helped with their, basically on-demand. They weren't doing an on-demand at that time, they were doing a para, like a disability type thing, where they could call and they would kinda get them taken to Dr. Spelman's or whatever. So we've, we've been paying for a long time for that, but at a more proportionate rate, I think, than what we're doing right now.
So, in comparison, wouldn't we pay central AMX?
No, I can tell you, 'cause I can look at the budget right here, 'cause it'll tell you exactly.
It's $14,000 a year.
Yeah.
We pay $14,000 a year for
An ambulance a year.
Who knows how, how many runs they make. Now, granted, the ambulance charges for those runs on top of that, or for some of them, not all of them, but those, our regional transit is also charging, you know. So if they come and get you, there is a, there is a charge to the rider as well as our $8,000 payment, so. As we move into the budgeting season, which is coming up, definitely something we wanna be aware of and think about as we look forward to that.
Anything else?
Anything else for Christie?
Christie, can I ask you a question? It's not about budget, but
Oh no, I don't know if I have an answer then.
How are they doing recycle? Because the guy I saw dunked dick in with the trash.
When was that?
When the first time they picked up our trash.
We, we got.
I mean, everything just went in the trash and I was like, wait a minute, why did I swerve all this out and save this?
We got that complaint early on, on the first Monday. We immediately called Inland and they immediately put a stop to that, so.
So, how are they gonna do it?
There's two trucks running. There's two trucks running.
Okay.
So, yeah. If, if anybody sees that again, please let us know, but there had been two trucks in town. This, there, well, I mean, that, that week there was two trucks too. They just were still picking up some of it. This week, they really did do, and they're doing, they're kinda doing totally opposite routes, so you won't see one back to back or anything like that. They're coming at completely different times.
Cause that was disturbing, I thought.
It was, and, and we basically said, we do not wanna be Fort Smith. We don't need that kind of. The managers were mortified, so they got that.
Yesterday or today? I haven't had my big duck yet.
Okay, did you call us today?
I've called twice.
Okay. We have got a list. There's, there have been a lot. There's been a lot of misses. I'm sure Amanda's got you.
Cause if I'm not getting it, my one and only neighbor is not getting it either.
They had told us Friday, basically, we're gonna come out Monday, we're gonna do the routes. Make a list of everybody that calls and says they got missed or they still haven't been fixed or all the million different things that have happened. I can't even tell you all the different scenarios that have gone wrong, but, and so we have made a list and they're supposed to come out tomorrow and correct all of it. There is about 50 items on that list, which include two complete streets. I mean, they're, they've missed two streets completely two weeks in a row. It's piling up, so. If for some reason, it doesn't get picked up tomorrow, it will be Monday before they do it. But let us know, obviously, we don't know to have them come back and fix it, but if, if you hear people tomorrow that say they still haven't done this, please have them call us again as soon as they can, because then they'll start working on getting corrections made again Monday. They have said that if, so if one didn't pick up the first week, the second week, they expect additional items on the ground or whatever. So, I, I think it's gonna take a month before it's really
Any other questions for Christie?
They have, we've had.
When it starts coming out, they can.
Yeah, we, our citizens have been amazingly supportive, frustrated, but very easy to deal with, very understanding. They just want it fixed. I didn't get my recycling picked up the first week, I wanted it fixed. So, it's, it's gonna be a process to get it all done, but I think once we get all those kinks out, I think it's, it's gonna be good.
Well, we have red off and I said, well, you've got red off. They can't get the red off without one of Elkins, so. But my
The first, when they went out.
I've been calling, cause they were like, we don't have you down for recycling. And they were really nice and they left a can. And so I called, you know, first to say, make sure I'm paying for this and you have it down. And then my neighbor and I, who came down there and I said, I'm, I'm working on that bomb. And we got our trash, so that was, it was 6 o'clock last night.
Yeah, they got, they got around late yesterday. But yeah, if you guys hear, if anybody else says anything, tell them to please be in touch with us, because we're definitely trying to get them organized as easy as we can. I know there's been, there's been multiple things that people have called and, and we've also had the scenarios of people that signed up for one thing, that all of a sudden were like, oh, you know, I really wanna change that. So on top of the things that were true errors, we, we are also implementing changes right in the middle of all that, so it's, it's been quite a Yeah. Very interesting, but, but I think it'll be great, I, I really do, once, once all the kinks get out of it.
And I don't know if you guys have had a chance to drive through town on a Monday, but it looks nice. There's a consistency. Yeah, the cans look good, there's no more bags on the ground, there's no more dogs running. I mean, honestly, I think I've seen less dogs since we went to this, but it, it does look nice. And if you, if you drive around town, you'll notice that a lot of citizens are taking advantage of a price break. There's a lot of people not using the recycling and thereby they're saving three or four dollars, so.
And we've actually had multiple calls to say that it looked nice and that they, they thought it was
Uniform.
A good thing for the city.
The stuff they did drop on the ground, they did pick it up. They did stop and pick up some stuff they had dropped. If it was recycled, they picked it up.
And the dogs are all on the end of the trash.
Any other questions for Christie?
Thanks, Christie.
Thanks, Christie. All right, up next is our new business. First off, we have resolution 2017-06. It's a show of support for marketplace fairness legislation. What that means is sales tax collection from internet sales. So, if I were to ask for a show of hands in the room of who has bought something on the internet and not paid sales tax on it, we would all raise your hand, right? And if I were to tell you that you have broken the law by doing that, you would probably be surprised. By Arkansas law, you are supposed to pay a use tax, if you buy something out of state and bring it into the state and have not paid tax on it. So, I, I'm a little bit conflicted on this. I'm, I'm just gonna, you guys are gonna vote on it, I'm not. But I want, I want you to know the whole story on it. So if, if you go Google, or you can just go straight to the state website and look up what nexus is in the state. Nexus means, does my business have a presence in this state, okay? If I have a presence in that state, then I'm required to pay sales tax. If you look up the definitions for Arkansas nexus, it pretty well excludes online retailers, okay? State law excludes them. Arkansas sales tax is very confusing. I deal with it daily and when you, if you, if you have a question on Arkansas sales tax and you call the state, if you talk to two different people, you'll probably get three different answers. So I just want that to be, I want you to be aware of that. Sales tax collection off internet sales would be great for the city. And there's, there's different thoughts on whether it's fair or not fair for brick and mortar, you know, our in-state stores. That, that can be discussed another time, but I want you to know that the state, the state legislation has taken this up, they've looked at it, but the state is really remiss in their own diligence of defining, defining their nexus. So, however we vote on this, and, and it would, it would be increased sales tax revenue to the city of West Fork if, if the state were to pass this. The state needs to change the law and they can grab a lot of that. Amazon has voluntarily decided to start collecting sales tax and remitting it. But, but do keep in mind that it's not, it's not all in the business. Arkansas law, while most people don't know it, is if you buy something online and don't pay sales tax on it, you're supposed to contact the state and pay that sales tax. God help you to do that, because it is a confusing time. But That being said, is there any other discussion on marketplace fairness legislation?
They've been trying to do this for a long time.
Yeah.
Twenty years, fifteen years. But the online presence is taking more of a lead in the more brick and mortar. Doesn't have a problem with space that Amazon loses in to compel them to start volunteering to remit the tax.
But now, I'm more stressed about point of sale than anything. You know, cities lose sometimes. It's harder and harder for Christie to project what's gonna happen that much, because all of our sales taxes will go to Bentonville, you know, one month and then will be a windfall next. That drives me much more nuts than this does right now.
So just to give you an example of Arkansas state law, this is on their website. If, if I'm a business in Missouri and you come to me and you drop off your whatever and I fix it for you and you come back up there and I don't charge you sales tax, because Missouri don't charge sales tax on that. You come back, pick it up, bring it back to Arkansas, there's no sales tax owed. However, if you bring that same piece of item to me and I fix it, but I mail it back to you, there's sales tax owed on that. But, I just
You know what, you wanna increase revenue? To everybody in this, in this city and have a surfeit on them? Remove the exemptions from the sales tax. There you go. So anyway, anybody who has a good lobby goes Little Rock, gets whatever they want exempted. It could be high glasses, chicken feet. You wanna remove all those, then you won't be worried about online sales.
So, that, all that being said, we need to, we need to vote on this and, and I'm not against it, don't get me wrong, I'm not against it. I just, it aggravates me where the state is on this, that they, they come out and they, they kinda float this out. It's almost like they want the people to, to change this for them. But, but their own rules are in place, holding back sales tax from being collected as it is. The, the rules for internet sales are The, the rules for internet sales are, it's ridiculous, how easy it is to get around them, so. Anyway, that being said, if there's no further discussion, I would entertain a motion to...
Sign up.
Yes, to show support or not show support for Resolution 2017-06.
Only put less.
To...
Have...
Just show support, okay?
To approve, you're going with the approval, okay.
Motion second, all those in favor say yes, those oppose, same sign, motion carries.
I imagine someone with a small business that you see are more than...
I get calls every day, I bought this on Amazon, can you put it in for me? My business put Amazon stuff in or to services.
So our next item in new business is, is a letter of engagement for auditing services. We talked about that when our auditor was here going over his report, there's a account in the, in the court system that, that's off somewhere, we don't know where, it's, it's been like that for years and years and years. And so anyway, it's been written up time after time after time. Christie's looked at it, Paul Eddis looked at it, the auditor even thinks that it, that it could be a software glitch, because it's, it's two systems, right? It's a trust account, and one system says this much money goes in, but another system says this much money comes out, is that...
Well, I don't know.
No?
Not exactly.
Oh, I collect receipts all month long, and I may collect forty thousand dollars in receipts this month, but because some of those cases haven't come to court yet, haven't passed before the judge, or haven't been disposed of, it holds that money, throw it back, so they only disperse thirty-five thousand, so there's five thousand dollars there, that normally I can account for, and there has been money there that I couldn't account for. I finally got my fellows down in Fort Smith to do my program, to look at this report that I was getting, it was like two-hundred-and-ninety-four pages, completely unmanageable, there's no way I could go through it, because it had so many pluses and minuses, you know, if, somebody paid thirty dollars and there'd be five dollars off for here and ten dollars off, we couldn't look it, I mean, it just, it didn't work. I finally got them to look at it, and they took all those discrepancies out. That two-hundred-and-ninety-four-page document is now down to fourteen pages. This makes a whole lot more sense. So now I've been able to go through that document and find every one of those receipts, and I can show the auditor that they all went into the bank. Now I've got to find where they came out, when were they paid out, how were they paid out, and that's what we're trying to reconcile now.
Okay, so we're gonna start with the three-thousand dollar...
Yes, he's given us a quote not to exceed three-thousand dollars.
I guess I misread that, I thought it was, unless it exceeds...
Yeah, not to exceed, if it exceeds, he'll come back to us.
Okay.
With a, with an explanation of why.
But I think if I can devote a couple of days to it with him, I think we could get it fixed.
And he, he's mentioned that he thinks he can, he thinks he can find this.
I can't find it, I, I'm not telling, I can't.
Well, the last time we talked about it, we all agreed that needed to be reconciled, once and for all.
So I would entertain a motion to approve that.
Second.
Motion second, all...
Who made the motion?
Johnny.
I think you can.
All those in favor say yes, those oppose, same sign, motion carries. With that, Mayor's comments, I just want to thank everybody again for the work at the Fourth of July, it was hot, there was a lot of people, it was good, it was really good stuff, so, thank, thank everyone.
I had a good comment about how great the weather was.
Prosumer was out of control, nobody almost got it.
Would someone make a motion to dismiss?
I don't think so.
Motion in second, again, got the second on that, all those in favor say yes.
I like the big, you know, verification, I think, on Friday. I was told the other day, back here, that seniors got the small container.
Who told you that?
Amanda?
Yeah, whoever did back there in the, in the booth, and if that's the case, that's what we're paying for the discount, is the small container, then we're not getting the discount.
Correct, you're getting the tiny, tiny space.
Let's see, let's, hang on just a second, go ahead, Christie.
I don't necessarily have a comment to that, I, I mean, they're, they are very welcome to go with the other rate, the higher rate, and get the larger cart, but...
And we're not getting the discount.
Well, I think, I think the idea, Danny, was that a lot of the seniors, just like with the Waterville, a lot of the seniors aren't using the same amount, it's a reduced amount, there's even...
That, that, that doesn't mean, we get, Waterville's is based on a certain amount of water, and then the model water is not to be used over a base rate, that's one thing. This, we were told, was a discount.
And we were told also.
We were going to get a discount, seniors was going to get a discount, we wasn't going to get a smaller damn trash can.
It didn't say that, in our house, it did.
Actually, it did, yeah, yeah. It said, it had on there that it was a sixty-four gallon cart or a ninety-six gallon cart.
In either one, they screw in the senior.
It's four dollars cheaper than the other one, so it, it is a reduced rate, but yeah, it's a smaller cart, but they are more than welcome to go with a larger cart and pay the other one.
Well, there's some people out there I've seen that, not seniors, has got the smaller carts. My house, we filled it up and had lid open on it.
If there are people out there that aren't seniors but have the smaller route, it's because they've got a disability that they've brought us in, and so they're, they're getting the senior rate because of a disability and they have this large...
Well, I've got a hundred percent disability, what's that get me, I pay...
The same rate as your senior rate.
No, I'm not, 'cause I got the bigger trash.
Do you have the senior trash can with the disposable trash?
No.
Oh, yes, we saw it.
So what are you paying, are you paying the senior rate?
I'm, no, I was told I had the...
If you have the large can, it's, it is the eleven...
Then I am getting a discount.
No, 'cause you're, you're not doing the senior or the disability, and if you do that, you go to a smaller can.
There's screw-ins, excuse me.
All right, so we have a motion and a second, all those in favor of dismissal say yes, those oppose, same sign, motion carries.